Good evening, welcome to the August 9th East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Let us stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to introduce our attendees at the table. I'm Scott Lambert. On my immediate right is Rich Orlo and Peter Fixler. On my immediate left is Bernadette Kersley, who is our Kearney, who is our Solicitor, and Steve Brown, Township Manager. I think what we will do is, we're going to jump to number four in terms of allowing our promotions to be front and center here, and if you would like to lead us off with that. Greg?
Thank you, everybody. A short time ago, we had a vacancy in the captain's position in the Department of Fire and Emergency Services through an application process of our eligible acting captains. We made a selection to promote firefighter EMT Terry Bechtel to fire captain. He started on August 2nd, and he is assigned to the C Platoon. So joining Terry tonight is wife Karen, daughter Bethany, her husband. So I'd like to invite Captain Bechtel and his wife Karen up, and she can pin his badge. that was pending. So at that time, we conducted applications of our eligible part-time firefighter EMTs. And through an application process, I'm pleased to announce that firefighter EMT Paul Brown was selected as the next full-time firefighter EMT. Paul is joined in the back of the room, girlfriend Samantha, mother Monica, Frank. So I can ask firefighter EMT Paul Brown and Samantha to... And I did forget to mention that firefighter Paul Brown has also been assigned to the C Platoon under the direction of Captain as well. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck. I will move back into the flow here, I think, at this point in time. Do I want to go to finish board motions? All right.
Well, I mean, finish with the part-time part-time.
Okay. Greg, continue. I thought you were going to run through them, so the new part-time firefighters.
Back on June 17th of this year, we conducted a new candidate firefighter EMT written test and physical agility test. Of the candidates that passed both portions, we conducted oral panel interviews, and we have selected four candidates that would be great additions to our department. So I'm looking to approve the job offers to four new part-time firefighter EMTs, Carl Weisbecker, Alan Egerton, Daniel Cornell, and Quentin Lott.
Yeah, why don't you make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the job offers for the four new part-time firefighters, Carl Weisbecker, Alan Egerton, Daniel Cornell, and Quentin Lott.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. Congratulations.
Excuse me. I don't think we made a motion on the first one. Did we, or did we not? I might have missed it.
That was actually voted on at last month's meeting. This is just the promotional part.
Yeah, I thought we did it last month.
Yeah. No, that was done last month.
Well, why don't we stay with the board motions and move on to four C. And Brittany, would you like to...
Um, yeah, it's a deed of dedication for the right-of-way and storm sewer pipes. This is for the Reserve at Great Valley.
Can't hear you.
This is for the Reserve at Great Valley. This is known as the, called the Flat Reserve Development. But heard that's actually going to take this one over.
Sure. As Brittany indicated, you may not have heard, these are the deeds of dedication for the Flat Road, Great Valley, and these are, Allison Zaro is the attorney for the applicant toll. These are items that both Al and I have reviewed and have agreed to. John Neeld had suggested some language in one of the deeds of dedication, which we have included. This also includes the storm, or the sinkhole remediation agreement along with escrow for that sinkhole remediation agreement.
Right. I think it was kind of well deliberated the last time. Any updates? So I think while technical support is over there working, would you like to make a motion, Peter?
I would like to make the motion to accept the deed of dedication to the right-of-way and storm sewer pipes for the Reserve at Great Valley.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes. Now we'll return to our regularly scheduled program. Don't let Catherine touch those dials anymore, would you? Whatever you fix, she unfixes. For anyone who's following, we did have a public hearing, a conditional use hearing this afternoon at 5:30, which was concluded prior to this meeting. Moving on to board briefings, we have held executive sessions today at 4:30, 5:30, and 6:15 today, and discussing legal personnel and real estate matters.
And August 7th.
And...
August 7th.
Are you, your mic working, Catherine Sue? Updates on the grant application update?
I think so, yes. If you can hear me okay. So within the last 30 days since the last board meeting, we have one new grant application. This is for select sections of the Route 30 improvements, specifically at the 352 and Route 30 intersection. This is for multi-modal transportation grant in the amount of, this is the request amount of $2.3 million roughly. So that was just submitted, and we should find out sometime by early fall if the township will be successful with that effort.
Okay, thank you. So at this point in time, we've, we're in a wait-and-see position for that money. Moving on, an update from Steve Brown pertaining to the Bishop 2 situation.
Thank you, Scott. Last month, near the end of July, I had a telephone conversation with Bonnie McLennan. She's the environmental group manager for the DEP in our region, and we spoke about the public meeting that DEP plans to hold regarding the Bishop 2 property. The meeting will, for those who aren't aware, the meeting will be held on September 12th of 2023 at General Wayne Elementary School from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, and it will be held in the auditorium of that building. The format of the meeting will be question and answer, which is different than the last meeting DEP held, which was actually a public hearing, and residents and interested parties were restricted to, I believe, two or three minutes of comments, and there was no Q and A. So again, this is a different format, which is good. They will present, they being the DEP, will present the selected response, they'll describe it, and again, answer questions to try to help the public and us to understand it. They'll also include a review of the sequence and schedule of actions. They intend to address the residents' concerns with the plan and methods that DEP proposes. They also intend to have the contractors from the PRPs available that evening to be part of the Q and A session. We discussed that the township will hold its public meeting sometime after the DEP meeting on the 12th. We don't have a date, and that's something I'll follow up with the board on. I would suggest we try to do it before the end of September or early October at latest. So I would suggest we try to do it within a couple weeks of their meeting. That's really it regarding the meeting. Also, again, for just general awareness, that the developer of, or proposed developer of the property has submitted what's called a final subdivision land development plan. Some time ago, the preliminary subdivision land development plan had been reviewed and approved by the township, and the final plan has now been submitted and is under review by the township. So that will be on future planning commission meetings and board of supervisors meetings.
And Steve, to be clear on that, which can be confusing, is do, none of the previous conditions are going to change for the most part, correct? It is basically kind of a wordsmithing, anything that may have changed, and nothing more, nothing new is being added?
Yeah, Bernadette can help with this, but yes, the preliminary plan is, as I understand it, that's where most of the heavy lifting gets done, most of the engineering is done with the preliminary plan. That's when the conditions of approval are set, the applicant and property owner at that point lock into their property rights and plan protections, and then the final plan, at least as I have always viewed it, is really kind of eye dotting and T-crossing, and it's mostly maybe like adding signature blocks to the plan or something, you know? Again, Al Vinatelli from Arrow could help me, or Bernadette or Brittany, but yes, I think that's a long-winded answer, a long-winded yes.
I just want to assure the public that there's nothing new really of substance going into this, so you're aware.
Correct.
Okay.
The PRP.
If, I need Catherine, if you can come up. Please, thank you.
Kathleen Stauffer, 64 Fawnstock Road. It's just that when you use initials, PRP, can you just explain?
I forget what the first P is, but it's responsible parties.
It's potentially responsible parties. Frank.
So the...
Consultant Rue, you may have heard Rue's name. They're an environmental consultant that has been contracted by the PRPs, the potential responsible parties. So Rue's been studying this site for some time, and the DEP intends to have them there to answer questions.
Okay, all right, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
So we have another question, actually, we have a question over here, Deborah Mobile. You need to unmute yourself, please.
Apologies, Zoom has like changed the whole format. I have trouble finding things. Deborah Mobile, 42 Village Way. Considering the importance of this meeting with the state, or let's say the importance of what the state is attempting to do in the cleanup, considering the length of the time that we have been battling sometimes against you and sometimes alongside of you as far as what needs to be done with Bishop 2, I'm concerned about how this is being advertised. I have put in multiple letters, et cetera, to the DEP. The DEP did not notify me. However, my husband, who just kind of comes to meetings when I ask him to, to show support, he got a notification about the meeting. So I'm very concerned of how the community at large, it is so much more important than just putting it on your website, how it's possible that the community will be alerted to this. And I think that that's something that the township needs to move on now, rather than a week before the meeting, when people have already started their beginning of the school year activities. Second of all, I think it is critical that members, and I know you cannot require attendance because your committees are strictly volunteer, but that members of the planning committee who voted approval of this plan over the years, of the building plan over the years, members of the zoning board who are affected by building in this township, and members of the environmental committee be strongly encouraged to attend this meeting with the state. I feel confident that our three supervisors, along with several other members of the management team at East Whiteland will be there. But I am, you know, I think it's really important that they be asked to attend the meeting. Their input is also important. They see things from a different perspective than just myself as a neighbor. And certainly, even committees like the environmental committee, they have all kinds of expertise in understanding these things that I don't. The other, the third comment that I make actually has to do with the builder and his final plan. In the final plan, are the conditions that you set down for the builder, I believe there were like 17 conditions that you set down before you approved the plan before this one, are they being met in the final plan? Thank you.
Deb, thank you for your comments. Yes, we can help advertise the meeting, and I heard you that you believe the website's not adequate. I'll also get back to the state and ask that they make efforts to notify the residents and get the word out. So we'll do both of those things. And I think your point is well taken. We'll invite the boards and commissions as you suggested, and the answer to your question about the conditions is, again, those conditions still remain, and they must be met by the applicant. I'd have to look at the conditions myself. Some may be met during the final plan submission review and decision-making. Some may be met, or will be met certainly, after assuming a plan's approved, and if there's ever any construction, then the conditions would be met, because a lot of them are related to, you know, construction. But those conditions remain, and we'll make sure they're complied with.
Thank you.
And Deb, one of the challenges that we've had in trying to push out information to residents, you know, if you recall, we were giving away Phillies tickets if you signed up with your email, so that we could push out information to you. We've added the Facebook page. We try to update the website. So I'll ask you, does General Warren Village, do they, you have a homeowners association with emails or anything like that? That would be, it'd be something that we could piggyback on and send things out on behalf of the township. So if that were the case, I'm not sure who would be in charge of that, but, you know, let us know, because, yes, we want to get this information out to as many people as possible, especially those that are immediately affected, like that group of people. Okay, Deb?
Thank you.
Kathleen?
Yes, so as far as, this is Kathleen Stauffer, 64 Fawnstock Road. As far, there is a group, a staring group connected to the neighborhood, so we can talk, and you being on Facebook is awesome, and your conversations on Facebook, letting us know that you're there. So social media is also, because there's groups of social media. So we will definitely help in any way we can to let people know about.
Great. I didn't think anybody read my stuff. I got one, I got one anyway.
I need a spot.
Moving on, if there's no other questions, on a serious note here, I want to give an update on the sewer sale and where we are at this point in time. This is a statement by the board regarding the sale of the sewer system. As many are aware, the current and prior East Whiteland Township supervisors, after numerous public presentations and countless hours of meetings and reviews with consulting engineers and lawyers, financial professionals, and other related disciplines, concluded it was in the best interest of the township to pursue the sale of the township sewer system. Last week, the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court issued a decision overturning the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission's approval of the sale of the system to Aqua. We, the board of supervisors, strongly believe that the court's decision ignored the many benefits to the residents and the taxpayers of East Whiteland Township that would have come from the sale of the system. We intend to take action to seek corrective action of this decision. Some of the history on it is, following the state passage of an Act 12, which allowed the sale of municipal assets at fair market value, the board began in 2019 in a comprehensive multi-year review and evaluation from outside experts regarding a possible sale of the aging sewer system. The capital improvements needed of our system included pump station upgrades, two major sewer line extensions, lining, and replacing portions of the system, and we were encountering new environmental regulations which weighed heavily on our decisions. Costs, including additional likely debt service spread over only 3,900 end-users, would have been significant. During the time, during this time, we ended up holding seven public meetings to present information and received public feedback, which was favorable. I received no emails pertaining to not wanting to sell. The board concluded, subject to the acceptance of a valuation and the right partner, a sale to an outside company was both in the best interest of our residents and critical to the financial solvency of East Whiteland Township. Our reaction, this board of supervisors is surprised and disappointed by the Commonwealth Court's opinion. In seeking its appeal of the PUC's decision, the numerous public benefits included in the record, and the significant benefits to the safety, well-being, and the lifestyle of East Whiteland's residents, we strongly disagree with the decision which adopted what we believe to be the IOC's erroneous position. Perhaps most disappointing, we believe the court's opinion effectively does not allow for the board to fulfill our role as elected officials. The Commonwealth granted townships the authority to make these decisions in part based upon their understanding of local needs and priorities. In the event the reversal remains permanent, this board will not be able to move forward with the plans and visions for the townships. What does this actually mean to East Whiteland Township? The current and past board of supervisors, in considering the decision to proceed with the sale transaction, believe the public benefits far outweigh any potential disadvantages. These public benefits, which are at least, are now on hold indefinitely, include the following. A new police station? If the Commonwealth Court decision is not reversed, East Whiteland will not likely proceed with the new police station for possibly many years. Open space and parkland? There will be no active pursuit of open space. There will be no further pursuit of additional parkland. Route 30 Lancaster Avenue improvements? There would be no funds available at the township for any Route 30 improvements. Staffing? While we will fill any vacancies in open positions, we may not be in a position to increase staff and may explore a hiring freeze. Debit payments? All of the township's existing debit, which is debt, which is approximately $20 million, will remain and will be payable in accordance with its payment schedule over the long term. Community assistance? The assistance provided to local civic and community organizations in the past will unfortunately likely be eliminated or drastically reduced. These organization, these organizations enhance the lifestyle and the recreational opportunities within East Whiteland at little or no cost. Storm water management and flooding? As many of you know, the township has experienced certain flooding problems along Lancaster Avenue, Church Road, and certain private properties. We will not be in a position to study these problems, devise solutions, or implement solutions. These flooding problems will remain. Assure rate will increase. If the system reverts back to East Whiteland, there will be no doubt, there will be no doubt an increase in rates. The last rate increase was in 2017. Other taxes may be implemented as needed. To conclusion, the board of supervisors embarked on a lengthy process to sell the township's wastewater system after careful and deliberate consideration of the costs of continuing to operate the system versus the benefits that would have come to the township. The Commonwealth Court's decision, if it stands, will eliminate those benefits and remove the board's ability to move forward with its vision for the township. We believe the Commonwealth Court erred, and we will take appropriate action in furtherance of what we fully believe is in the best interest of our residents and what we fully believe is in the best interest of our residents and communities. Any further thoughts?
Just to echo what was just said, it was, it came as a pretty big surprise. Memory, I can't see the Commonwealth Court reversing other similar transactions to my memory, anyway. It almost seems that the OCA maybe had some political reasons for, to do this. It just was very, very surprising. And we will, we're currently discussing with council how best to elevate the litigation to the next step, whether it's to revisit the current court or elevate it to the higher court. We'll have a decision sometime next week, and we'll post, post it on the internet site so everybody is informed.
Any comments further, public? Okay. Moving on to 3E. Catherine, if you've got a little update here for Park and Rec?
Yep. I'm just going to go down through, take them a little out of order, but just in order that they appear in the calendar. So the next thing that's coming up is the last concert in the park, which will be on August 16th at Valley Creek Park. They, all concerts start at 6:30 PM. Immediately following that, or just a few days later, is the outdoor movie night. The movie will be Super Mario Brothers, also shown at Valley Creek Park. And the Park and Rec Board planned a few fun activities. There will be a costume contest, appearances by Mario, Luigi, and Princess Peach, and photo opportunities, free popcorn, and prizes for the best costumes. That starts at 6:30 PM. The movie will start at sundown. And finally, the Backton Hill Park grand opening ceremony is scheduled for September 9th, just about one month from today. That's a Saturday, beginning at 11:30 AM. There'll be ribbon cutting statements from the board members, appearances by DCNR, and hopefully some county folks, and some other activities that the Park and Rec Board is working on. And we'll have some promotional material out soon with some additional activity offerings.
The sign that is in process of going up, so far it looks great, the frame. I'm sure it'll be up within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, many thanks to the Public Works Department for their hard work.
Yeah, looks great.
Moving on to 3F. I wanted to indicate that the applicant has withdrawn their petition to include tracts of land, as we favorably call the Clues and Strawbridge property. I think this is in part to a great degree of opposition from the public. But at this point in time, again, the applicant has removed that application. So no further action at this point in time for that property. Jumping over four, which we've conducted, I will move on to number five, and the condition motion, consider motion to advertise and motion to award. It's already that time again, John.
We're asking for permission to advertise for the 2023-24 heating oil and diesel fuel
I assume that pricing has gone up considerably.
Yes, it has. Bad timing for us. Wasn't too bad a month or two ago, but it's right back to equal or a little higher than last year.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisement for the 2023 to 2024 heating oil and diesel fuel bid.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Scott, over here. Did you want to mention about the vacation?
Uh, thank you. Kind of a, I'm going on vacation for a year. I'll see you next year. Now, I wanted to point out something that I didn't realize existed, and I'll ask Chief Jaeger to maybe give a, maybe a little bit more of an overview. But recently, I went on vacation and a large portion of a neighborhood went on vacation and contacted the police department to, to alert them to a number of houses that were going to be vacant. And I didn't realize there is actually a portion on our website that would allow you to identify that situation, and you can notify the police department. I'll let Chris talk about it.
So if you go to our website, the township website, and go on government, and then click on police, on the side you'll see quick links, and one of them says something about Vacation Watch. So what happens is you, there's a form in there you can fill out, and it tells who's going to be at the house, when you're going to be gone, if there's anybody coming to feed dogs or anything like that. It says who has a key in case there's an emergency. And so it just gives, it asks for a lot of information, and then a good contact number. So if you're away and something happens, you know, we find someone there or something, you can go and we can make a phone call. So they're really helpful. When you submit the form, it goes straight into a mailbox and comes to us, and then we put it out to patrols. So then they'll check your properties on a regular basis, or at least if something happens, there's any incident or anything like that, we'll know who should be on the property or who shouldn't. So it's a pretty nice little benefit. And along with that, there's another form which gives you a residential form, just giving you, and it's not on that same part of the form. I'm not sure exactly where it is, on another part of our website. But that gives you a chance to give information about your house. Do you have cameras? Do you have alarms? Who we would contact in an emergency? So if we get a 911 hang up or something along those lines, and we get there and there's no one there and the house is locked, are you, there's a phone number we can call to say, hey, do you want us to break in or not? Like if it's someone who's ill and they haven't been, and you're in Michigan, you may say, yeah, just go in. Whereas we may not do that if we can't find out. So it's another little option you have that we've developed years ago for that exact purpose. It's kind of like the business alarm type thing, but we set it up for residents. So something everyone can take advantage of and feel a little more secure. And with all the cameras that we have in the areas now, too, if we have an incident at someone's house or something serious, we can look to see who's, who has cameras that we can call and ask, did anything, do you see anything strange on your camera? Because a lot of people delete it after a day, two days, three days. So we only have a short amount of time to get that information.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Moving on, Steve Brown, I'll let you talk about the ARPA grant awards.
I'm going to ask Catherine to do this. In fact, I've already asked her to do this. She's done most of the work, and I'll certainly chime in if necessary, or if the board has questions of me specifically. But I'll, I'll let her introduce it and lead the discussion.
So, thanks, Steve. So as the board and the public are probably aware of, the township received roughly $1.4 million from the federal government as part of the COVID-19 relief funds. And last year, a good portion of that money was expended. There was a significant HVAC upgrade made to the building amongst a few other expenses, but that was the most notable one, leaving roughly $500,000 in remaining funds. And as the board's probably aware, there is a time clock that's coming up on the need to both allocate and then also expend those funds. December 31st, 2024 is the date by which funds must be committed, and December 31st, 2026 is when they must all be exhausted. So it's not something we're permitted to hold on to indefinitely. So with that in mind, earlier this year, the board authorized a mini-grant program to be put out for some of the, with the intention that it would be allocated for some of the remaining ARPA funds, as we call them. And the general program requirements were that the purpose would be to award grants up to $50,000 to eligible nonprofit organizations to help, help offset the negative economic impacts and community needs caused by the pandemic in East Whiteland Township and Great Valley School District. Just briefly, the funding priorities align, generally speaking, with the federal government's program guidelines. These were targeted at groups seeking to improve food access, education, healthy childhood environments, housing, mental health, underserved children and youth programs assistance, and behavioral health prevention and education. So the application period closed on June 30th, and the township received six applications. Several of those applications, they were fairly extensive, and the documentation that was required was extensive. And so some of those things are still under review. So staff are prepared this evening to recommend consideration of award for three of those applications. And depending on how the board wants me to proceed, I can outline what those three applications are, just a brief description. Mr. Chairman, just let me know how you'd like me to describe
Why don't you just proceed, you know, through them?
Yep. So the first application that's recommended is Home of the Sparrow. This is an organization that's based in East Whiteland. They are, they, they identify themselves as the only Chester County organization dedicated solely to assisting single women and single mothers who are experiencing housing insecurity by preventing homelessness through a combination of financial assistance and case management. Their application requested $50,000 to help sustain service activities through direct rental payments for eviction prevention, education for financial literacy skills, and creating long-term strategies for housing stability. The second application is for the Catherine D. Markley Elementary School PTO. The Great Valley Outdoor Classroom Pavilion Project submitted by Katie Markley PTO sought $50,000 to help fund the construction of an outdoor classroom on the site of the Katie Markley Elementary School property. Due to the construction of the new Great Valley School District 56 Center, a previous outdoor pavilion behind the former Great Valley District offices was demolished. The pavilion is an essential outdoor classroom space to supplement the in-classroom learning experience and engage kids in physical fitness. The pavilion project will be built on the site adjacent to the new Katie Markley Playground, according to plans already approved by the school district but not funded. The PTO did indicate that if the project was funded, it would also make the space available for public use during non-school hours, and also the Township Summer Camp Program. And finally, the third recommended application is for the Malvern Public Library. With reading and math scores hitting record lows, Malvern Public Library, which is the township designated public library, seeks $15,400 to provide additional services to the community via purchase of Vox books and Wonder Books for the Children's Collection. These books are valuable tools for new or struggling learners. For those struggling or new to reading, it can help them learn how to advance through pages and form words. The program also allows independence for readers who may not have support at home due to a lack of adult time and/or capabilities. The reading while listening method allows the reader to read silently or aloud while also listening to recordings of passages. Additionally, the library would purchase Launchpads, which are preloaded educational tablets for kids and teens. And these tablets improve literacy and STEM skills through lessons and games, including SAT preparation and training.
All good, all good programs to benefit the community. Catherine, I've got one question. In terms of the other three applicants, are you still waiting for some additional information on some of them, or is this your final determination?
So generally speaking, on the other three applications, one of, one of the main things that we're looking for in this mini-grant program is that, you know, as I sort of led out with, the funds have to be expended by a certain period of time. And one of the key things that staff look at when they evaluate these applications is, is this program sustainable if the township doesn't fund it? Or what happens if they're proposing an expansion of services and then the money dries up? Then what's going to happen? So there's a, there's a care that has to be taken in evaluating these applications that, you know, there's going to be good that's done with these programs that's not going to go away or fail to be able to be sustained once that money goes away. So those three applications, I would say, fall more into that category of needing additional information to ensure that it's a sustainable program.
Yeah, let, let me just add to that, Catherine. She's right. You know, basically, we have questions, and we want to discuss our questions and meet with the other three applicants. It's not that they're not good programs or good ideas. We just need more information, and we need to have, basically, we need to have meetings with them to get our questions answered. And then we can make a recommendation next month.
I would like to hear those other applicants and take a full, fuller picture of everybody and not just be looking at these three.
I agree with you. I think we maybe, you know, finalize your review, and then we can look at, at this in its entirety, in terms of dollars and who gets funds. What do you think?
Okay.
I think that makes sense. I'm a little surprised there are only six applications because we did publicize this pretty well.
Yep.
Yeah. So maybe there are others out there that, you know, just haven't had the chance to respond yet. Although with, you know, with this sewer sale money maybe not materializing, maybe some of that would be more appropriate for, to benefit the township and its residents directly.
Thank you.
So I guess, since it's a board motion, could I, could I have a motion to continue, a continuance?
Make a motion to continue further consideration of ARPA grant awards.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you think we can target next month or following month?
Yes.
Next, we'll move into planning and development. Brittany, I will let you lead us in this.
Okay. The first item I have is for you to consider an extension of time to render a decision on the following development applications. The only one we have is for a subdivision land development application at 99 Old Valley Road. They are giving us an extension until December 31st of 2023.
Let's see, problem there?
None at all, no. I'll make a motion to authorize the extension of time to make a decision on a preliminary final subdivision application from 99 Old Valley Road to December 31st, 2023.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Extension allowed.
Thank you. The next I have is to consider a motion to authorize advertising for the following ordinance amendments. The first item here is a zoning text amendment related to the signs in the ROC, our regionally oriented commercial residential district. This is section 200-89.1 in our zoning ordinance. You have reviewed this ordinance. We did find a minor typo within the ordinance. That's why you're seeing it again. It'll be sent back to our Planning Commission as well as the County Planning Commission. It is to allow two site identification signs and three entrance signs in the It is to allow two site identification signs and three entrance signs in the ROC, our zoning district. This, I'll say, is the Worthington Shopping Center. Our current ordinance allows a flip-flop of that, three site identification signs, which are the larger Worthington signs, so they're downsizing to two, and three entrance signs, which allows the full tenant listings. They'd like to have three. And this is just for you to authorize a hearing that'll take place at next month's meeting.
Peter, make a motion on that?
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertisement for the zoning text amendment related to signs ROC, regionally-oriented, commercial residential district development, section 200-89.1.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then the next item, I know that we are going to take a little more time to look at, so we won't be requiring any authorization this month. I'd likely come back to you next month after there's a little bit more time to review that.
Right. I, I, we had a lot going on this week, and I wasn't able to fully review it. You know, we got kind of tied up with the sewer situation, so I'd like to start at what you've done here, just want to look, look at it in a little more detail. It's a good basis. But maybe so people don't get concerned by what they're reading, because the wording is a little unusual. This does not allow any additional rezoning or additional residential usage of the property, correct?
You are correct. You are correct.
This is just pertaining to kind of like a
Architectural standards?
Architectural-type standards.
Architectural standards. It calls out
For this area that's already zoned for multifamily.
Correct.
Nothing new, nothing additional.
Correct.
Architecturally.
I'm happy to bring up a map if you'd like. We do have an existing multifamily district.
If you actually have that and that can pull it up, I think it would be beneficial for everyone to see it.
Am I too far? Oh, no, there we go. What about this one? Maybe if I move something to you?
While you're working on that, how about, John, would you like to go to number seven and give the code and property update?
Sure. On the updates, on the Pioneer Gas Station at 562 Lancaster, after multiple unfruitful attempts to contact the owners who are out of New York, determined the status to restoration of the property, enforcement notices are now in process for violations of the Property Maintenance Code. They did do some work there, they put a tractor on this, a backhoe on the site, but nothing's been there. Enough to message for them today, again, about the fence can be walked through and things like that, this property's not totally secure, so we'll stay on that, and if it, and if it occurs, then we have to write them a citation. On the OJ, AJ, was it?
John, I'm, we've, we've kind of had this situation once before with another piece of property, and I think, from my standpoint, and I'll compare it to the property that was next to Wawa that sat vacant for so long, and whose ownership failed to respond to us in a timely manner, my patience is worn thin with this property. So, from my opinion of one of three, I'd like you to put the pedal to the metal and do whatever it takes under our ordinances, and I know, you know, again, I know you're doing that, but, but I sincerely think that we have given this person and this organization plenty of time to correct this eyesore on, on Route 30.
We did get information that may have some play into it, that there was a possible sale of the property going on. They did some due diligence, right-to-know information here about the property, so that might have something to do with what they're doing, so we're trying to keep, keep looking into that, but we are going to do the enforcement actions that we have to do to get compliance. On the AJ Blazinski trash update, the number of complaints has curtailed recently as the hauler lessened the quantity of service in the municipality. Most recent complaints appear to be rectified within hours of the customers registering an inquiry through the hauler's "Contact Us" link on their website. The last couple issues, I told the residents to do that, got a thank you from the one guy, said they were there within an hour to pick it up. So, we've seen them, we have seen them going regularly through the township, and again, the complaints have, had slowed down. Last one would be on the Brin Aaron Development. After a variety of complaints from the owners or residents of the development, a Property Maintenance Code requirements reminder was sent out to all the owners and residents of this development. We immediately received a multiple positive responses to our outreach and several inquiries for clarification. And as proactive enforcement continues, we hope to see continued positive results in the, in this community and our township. We had a lot of grass complaints, abandoned vehicles, that kind of stuff there, so hopefully as we keep the pressure on, we've already seen results on some of the properties that were a problem, making owners aware that, the absentee owners aware that they were
I'll, I'll just add up regarding the trash situation, just to remind people that, that I had a conversation with Vice President of Operations and told him that, based on what we'd been hearing in the township, there were ordinance and citations that were being prepared against his organization, which could range from $100 to $1,000 per, per violation, at which time he assured me that things would be corrected. Definitely seems like it's going in the right direction, but if the residents, if you continue to have problems, please let us know, so we know where to go with this, because one of the things I indicated to, to that person was that if they can correct and resolve the problems, then we could reconsider the citations going forward. So, hearing from the residents is important on this issue.
Want to finish up? Brittany, now?
Brittany, you ready?
Yeah. Sorry for the technical difficulties there. So, this is just showing you, this is the current overlay district within the multifamily Route 30. So, the text amendment that we're proposing, that you'll take a little more time to look at and then potentially authorize a hearing next month, to have a hearing in October, would only relate to this, or these parcels shown here. It's roughly, I'll say, Prospect Ave. to Kaufman Avenue and fronts Lancaster Avenue. Just so everybody has an idea of what parcels and where in the township we're talking about. And again, that text amendment is mostly related to design standards, things like building palette colors, materials being used, things like that.
This map is part of the current ordinance, which means it's on our internet site?
Correct, yes. Yep, this can be found on our interactive zoning map, which is on the website, along with our typical static zoning map.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, under consideration to support, to support or oppose an application, on the zoning hearing board has two hearings scheduled for this month, on the 28th of August. First one will be the zoning hearing board 2023-05, the application of Timothy Kern and Karen Caban as to certain property located at 1050 West King Road. It's parcel number 427-7-21. The property is currently a legal non-conforming property as to setbacks in the R2 zoning district. The applications for a variance to section 200-102 of the zoning code, wherein the structure does not conform to the development standards of the code, and needs special, needs permission to be extended. They're looking to add three feet to a porch, which already encroaches four foot, two inches into required front yard. I have a map and took the drawing that Brittany can crawl up, just if you need to reference it for anything.
Evening, everyone. My name's Jonathan Long. I represent the fans of 1050 West King Road. That's correct. We're going for a variance. Really what we're, it's, I would describe it as borderline, basically, de minimis. It's an old home, dates back to the 1800s, so it obviously does not meet the current zoning. It's far closer to West King Road than every, most of the other properties along there, except some of the other older ones. Basically, there's a little front porch that's about
Four feet?
It's basically four feet by four feet that sticks off the front where the front door is. And essentially, what they would like to do is just extend that. They're not making any wider or anything. They literally just want to extend it about three feet out further in order to be able to put in like a coat closet and some other stuff, make it a little more of a usable place for their home. So, we're not asking for the world here. Obviously, because it is an older home, it doesn't comply, so therefore, we're going for the variance. So, hoping to talk you into just taking no position, and just letting the zoning hearing board make their decision on it. So, that's why we're here tonight.
We have, I think we all have no position.
No problem, no position.
We'll push it down the line to the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your consideration.
No position and no problem. Yeah.
No, yeah, obviously. We still have to make our case. We get it to the zoning hearing board, but just figured over three feet, it may not be worth sending the solicitor to.
Three feet, eight maybe, but not too
Yeah, if we were asking five, maybe eight, then yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. The second application we have will be 2023-04. It's the application to Jansen Research and Development as to certain property, 244 Great Valley Parkway. The property is an OBP zoning district. The application is for two variances to allow for the installation of a generator pad and walkways. The variances are for impervious coverage and setback requirements.
I have full faith in our zoning hearing board to not have to send Bernadette.
Agreed.
Agreed. Would you like to at least say a few things so you get your billable hour?
So, we have a question, actually, Martin Lutz. Go ahead, Martin. I'm actually not sure if it's for you, but you might as well stay for a minute. Marty?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Officer, I've raised my hand for the public comment portion of the meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
Are we done with previous matter?
Yes.
Okay, public comment, I have two, two items. First of all, I want to thank the board, all involved, for carefully listening to the concerns of the residents on the matter of the Chester County Intermediate Unit, conditional use application. I believe the conditions which you approved this evening cashier the concerns of the residents, so again, thank you all, all that are involved. Second, I want to follow up on a question which I raised last month, as to why the emergency access portion of Lap Road is not being maintained, so I was wondering where that matter stands.
Question, last month, he raised the issue of why the emergency road on Lap Road has not been maintained since it is owned, seems to be owned by the township. And we said, that's a good question, and we would look into it, and I don't know if we have any updates. And the appropriate person to look into it would be who? Any volunteers? I guess first, we need to confirm it's titled in the township, which shouldn't be difficult, and then, once it's titled in the township, we need to search the history of any approvals that apply to it, and then we need to make a decision. I guess. That's my analysis.
You were technically involved in that matter back in the 1980s, so if I could give any assistance, let me know.
Yeah, let me just jump in. Sorry, I, there were too many microphones on and I couldn't get a word in. Yeah, I think what happened is, frankly, I forgot about it and I didn't follow up on it, so I'll, I'll take the blame for that. We'll do as Rich said. I, I'm assuming we own it, but I think the first step is to make sure that we do own it, and so we'll talk amongst, talk amongst ourselves and, and use our solicitor's office as appropriate, and then we'll follow up on it, and we'll get back to you, Martin.
Give your attention.
No, there's one more comment. Are we in public comment, then?
Sure.
I'm not sure, actually. Okay, Deb, go ahead, please.
Deb Mobiel, 42 Village Drive. I noticed under the consent agenda that you were about to make a final payment of a hundred and, almost $110,000 for the plants at the corner of Route 30 and 29. Can you refresh my memory and tell me what the total cost of that project was?
That's, that's it. I think that was the total amount. That is the total. Which is, which is, which is less than we allocated originally.
Okay. I just, it's just a shame that we're spending, and I realize that the, the strip needed to have something done to it. It was cracking, you know, weeds coming through, et cetera, but I would think in the future that we would be concerned about spending money to beautify an area, to look at a big, ugly electronic sign. Because that's what you see at that intersection. That's what you're going to see, big, ugly electronic advertising. And so, why bother? Why bother? Give that money to the Home of the Sparrow. My book, you know? And just throw some cement on there. In the future, you know, those kinds of considerations. I mean, I'm all for beautifying Route 30, don't get me wrong, but if there's a limit to what you're going to be able to do, so spending, you know, little bits of money here and there in an intersection that you're up against just plain downright ugly, what difference does it make? Thank you.
Deb, I've heard a lot of positive comments about, about that triangle with the looking, looking good and, you know, trying to make improvement.
Well, the sign's not lit.
That's what we're trying to do. And by the way, and by the way
Why decorate for the sign?
There is a substantial amount of landscaping that's going to be put around that sign. Again, remember, I didn't vote for it. I don't like the sign.
I know, I know.
But, but I think, I think perhaps, when that's done and the landscaping is there, it might, it might be a little less an eyesore than it is, obviously, right now.
Okay. Yes, I am aware that you were not in favor of that, and I am continually hoping that the zoning, as you go through the zoning book and find those things, they are updated and revised, and we can move on to being more in control of our destiny.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
And I think we've got public comment in the audience. And I think we've got public comment in the audience.
Bob Logan, I live at 790 Bass Cove, the Lockwood Chase development. Got a couple of things here. I like to do multiple topics at one shot. Rich is saying no, so. I will if you will. First, on another positive note, I would like to thank the township. I'm not sure if it's Steve or Mr. Neal, but some paving projects that were done tremendously, or if it's somebody else. John? Good job, John. The Lockwood Chase, Lockwood Chase is 20% in East Whiteland, 80% in East Ocean, but the East Whiteland streets were resurfaced. Really nice. Good job. I have a question for you. Field, but still basically a big thumbs up. And Church Road, when you come off 202, when you cross 202, it used to be horrible coming down past the water station there and a part of the golf course. That's done very nicely also. So, they are kudos to whoever's involved there.
John, come up, stand up. Stand up. Come on. Come on, let's stand up.
Okay, I retract my, I retract here. Now, we'll go to the other stuff. Well, there was some, there were some comments made about beautification. I have come up with the word uglification, because I think that's kind of where we're getting to some. I think I sort of remember the background of that big ugly sign everybody talks about, and I don't think we had a lot of flexibility in there. That is a big ugly sucker. Water over the dam, but, and there was a comment about communication and the residents don't know what's going on and stuff like that. I tend to agree with that. I'm on a board with Rich and I'm sort of active, and even I don't always know what's going on. I'll make a suggestion, if the township can approach the people who own that billboard, ask to get, use some of that sign for public knowledge, public information.
During the process, okay, one of the things that we negotiated was that there'll be, there'll be usage of the sign at 29 and 30 that will be for township notifications and information.
Right.
Correct, we have that right.
Yep.
Do I congratulate John for that, too?
Sure, go ahead.
No, that's really good. Somebody else told me, I was, I'd already missed a vote on that one, so I'm glad to hear that. I don't know if that one sign's enough. You drive around different townships, you see our fire company has a nice sign, kind of small, but, you know, nice stone around and stuff like that. East Ocean has one. Other places have public, public announcement type signs, for lack of a term.
Bob, you must be reading minds.
Who's mind? I can't read my own.
Mine. We've started a process where we're actually in the process, John Neal's guys, trying to put together new signage for certain selected strategic areas. And on those signs, we're looking at attaching small LED signs for informational purposes to send, you know, light, light fire out.
Okay, cool, great.
So, we are, the two, the two that we're looking at is, would be outside of here, our township building, and I think the second one is probably going to be a new type sign on, at the Valley Creek location on 29 and up 29.
Okay, great.
Those two.
Thank you very much. Good job.
But listen, thank you for the, for the input. I think that's, that's great. I appreciate you coming out and sharing with us thoughts.
Thank you. I'd say great minds think alike, but that's not including me.
Sure it is. I don't care, I don't care what Rich says about you. I think you're all right.
That was John.
Come on down.
Hi, Barbara Arnold, 31 Fonstock Road. We were talking about the beautification. I just wanted to say, I would love to look at the beautiful plants out there, but I am too busy dodging the four giant potholes. When you go from 30 onto 29, they're in front of the Holiday Inn, and I know that's not your responsibility, but can somebody from the township contact the state to fix, or do you know if anything's underway? Because really, they're huge.
Come on, John, don't you do anything? Come on. We've contacted PennDOT multiple times. That, Route 29 is getting paved in their next contract, so we haven't gotten the schedule yet. We're hoping before the winter from Route 30 all the way down to the bottom. So.
John, let me see if I, I hear you right, because this is all over media and people don't apparently understand. That road, we do not own, we do not control, we are not allowed to pave, but what you've done is you've reached out to PennDOT, you've asked them about it, you've complained to them about it, and they've moved it up so that you're gonna, we're gonna see in their next cycle of paving, it should be there?
It's under contract now.
It's under contract?
Just waiting on schedule.
Okay.
So, they just had a big sinkhole, I don't know if you saw, in front of the Wawa. They dug that out and fixed it yesterday and today.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a pretty good size, right in the middle of the road, but.
What size car did they pull out?
No, it took the median, there was taking the median, so.
Yeesh.
But yes, that is, go ahead, it's a terrible road. They know it.
Yeah.
So, it needs to get, but yes, in the township, Route 30, Route 29, 401, Sweetsford Road from Plainbrook to Tridaffern, they're all state roads. Phoenixville Pike by Home Depot, state road. We can only complain, but we don't do anything. Yeah, and, you know, complaints work. So, people, when they call me, I give them the phone number to the Chester County Maintenance. More people who call, they get more attention. You're welcome.
And when you said 29, the entire portion of 29 is scheduled?
Yes, they're going into Charlestown.
Into Charlestown?
Yes, right down to the bottom of the hill there at the traffic light.
Tim P., if you're out there listening, it'll make you be happy.
John, quick question. Which Wawa was the sinkhole?
It was on 29 right in front of the Wawa, at Atwater.
At Atwater, okay.
I just have a burning question, just as we grow, the way we're growing, and that property tax is the tax for our schools. When it comes to apartment buildings, the people who are paying rent, who's responsible for paying the property taxes on those buildings?
The property owner.
The property owner.
Yeah, tenants pay rent. Rent is used by the property owner to pay the real estate taxes.
And is a property owner different usually from the property manager, or someone who's managing the building?
I would say most of the time, yes, but it might be an affiliate of the owner.
Right.
Could be just a separate corporation, you know, connected, or it could be third party. Everyone's different.
Different then.
Yeah.
But as a property owner, who pays those taxes?
Peter, what time is it?
Five of eight. Are we done, public comment?
Yes.
I went to, since we were talking about the island beautification, that 109, that's the total cost of the island beautification, Steve, and is any of that held in escrow for, again, my point of contention is if those plants die within the year?
I think we got a one-year warranty with the organization we work with, if I recall.
There's a bond attached to it.
And a maintenance bond attached to it.
That's what I'm curious about. Thank you.
Yeah. Moving on to item number nine, and I will read the consent agenda. If you have any questions, pause me and we can discuss it. Otherwise, I'll run through them in entirety. Approve the meeting minutes from July of 2023. Ratify the payment of bills in the amount of $478,973.67. Accept the treasurer's report for June. Approve amendments to the workspace parking agreement for the August 26 movie night at the Valley Creek Park. Chester County Chamber of Business Industrial Membership in the amount of $1,100. Approve 35 Carroll Lane Real Estate Transfer Tax refund in the amount of $1,421. Ratify the MTF CFA Route 30-352 Intersection Resolution Number 22-2023. H, approve agreement with the Great Valley School District for Inspector Services, additional Department of Code Services. Approve switching cell phone service to AT&amp;T, first net monthly amount of $1,113.74. Approve the financial payment on the Route 29, Route 30 Island Beautification Project in the amount of $109,938.65. And last but not least, is approve the purchase of a CPR mannequin and choking vest in the amount of $3,579.59.
Greg, how many mannequins is that?
I'm sorry, $3,575.59 choked up.
So, on that, our department was recently accredited as a CPR and first aid training center, so we've been conducting CPR classes for the public and businesses. So, we currently borrow our mannequins from other agencies. So, with the influx of getting requests, purchasing our own, and this is enough, we're going to have, I believe it's a dozen CPR mannequins and two choking vests, so we can have classes up roughly 30 people in it.
Is that, is that something, is that something maybe we could offer for like our volunteer boards to be part of that, or at least an invitation?
Yes, I was actually, Steve Brown and I had conversations, we want to offer a class for the township staff and boards and commissions and whatever else.
Would you, would you be able to include the defibrillator utilization?
Yeah, oh yeah, that'll be included.
That would be included?
Yeah, that's part of the CPR class.
That would be, you never know. You never know.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I recently took a CPR class and it included choking vests. I wasn't very successful in dislodging the objects, so if you choke, don't do it in front of me. Well, before we, before we forget, can I have a motion?
Yep, sure. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And they pass. Meeting is adjourned. 8:02.